Shall we begin, Paul? We're recording.
We are. Thank you for the reminder.
Yep, like to call this meeting to order. The Pledge of Allegiance is on the agenda because it was intended to be an in-person meeting. We haven't done it for Zoom, so I think we can go to the next item. Mr. Zarzaki.
All right, Ms. Chick.
Yes, here.
Mr. Kuznow is not present, it appears. Mr. Dreyer.
Present.
Mr. Aquinto.
Here.
Ms. Afante.
Here.
Mr. Roman.
Here.
And Zarzaki present, so we have six present, one absent.
Thank you. I make a motion, we adopt the agenda. Is there support? For Vice, Mr. Aquinto. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 No one opposed. Go to Call the Public, Mr. Lippens, if you can take that.
I will, thank you, Chair. For members of the public that are here, we now have a call to the public and we will also have a final Call the Public at the end of the meeting. We ask that you state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you have come to the meeting tonight to speak to one of the items that we're holding a public hearing, it's probably best that you wait to make comments during that public hearing on that specific case. But we will hear any comments at this time that you'd like to make or share with Planning Commission. To do that, please raise your hand by using the Raise Hand button on Zoom. And I don't see any people calling in, so no one will be looking to use the star six feature on a phone. And I'm also not seeing anyone with a hand raised. If there's anyone that perhaps didn't figure out how to do it, we do have a call at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. In that case, there'd be no clarifications from Commissioners. Correspondents, I don't believe there was any. So we do have three public hearings tonight. We'll get into those. I make a motion to open case JPC 200018. Recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Terra Firma 6410 Whitmore Lake Road in Whitmore Lake. The applicant seeking conditional use to operate a landscape business. The parcel numbers are B 0229 200003 and B 0229 200004 enters owned LI Limited Industrial District.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Aquinto. Mr. Lippens, we'll go to the, if there's anyone that has comment. As the process goes, we will ask the applicant to present a statement regarding their request in five minutes or less. We will call on the planning consultant to present a short summary of the report. And then we can also call on those of the public that wish to speak. And that would be a three-minute time limit. And we can call on the applicant or the planning consultant for any clarifications. So in doing that, perhaps we can start with the applicant, Mr. Lippens.
That sounds good. I will promote Mr. Corf and Mr. Patterson, who are here to represent the application. Would say, just for a point of clarification on the conditional use, the landscaping business is a permitted use in the industrial district. The part of the site plan that is being requested for a conditional use is the outdoor storage of landscaping supplies. So we do have a revised site plan also on the agenda that includes and shows the location of where those storage for wood chips and river rock and those types of customary materials that are part of a landscape business will be put. So that is the part of the site plan application that requires a conditional use. And that's been, that's what has been added since the last time Planning Commission reviewed this case. So I am going to promote Eric Patterson and James Corf. Two panelists. So yeah, we've got James Corf, the architect, and Eric Patterson, the business owner, here tonight to represent their application. Jim, are you?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes.
So I guess I would sort of repeat what you said, Paul. The only real change to the site plan, in addition to addressing the comments from our last meeting, was the addition of some segmented block storage bins outside, sort of on the east side of the proposed barn building. It was more of an effort not to be handcuffed at a later date should large projects come through, which of course they're pursuing. Originally, the intention was to store everything inside the barn, but you know, I'd rather get ahead of the conditional use requirement right now. If it's required for them going down the road, it just makes a lot of sense. I guess I would say that there's no height here that's larger than six feet on the segmented block storage bins. And that those are all enclosed in our 10-foot privacy fence, so they wouldn't be seen by anyone driving around or anything like that. And if you have any questions about how they work or what they look like, I guess I'm open to answer questions.
Thank you, Jim, and I don't know, Mr. Patterson, would you like to make any comments?
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, I think Jim Corf sized it up pretty well as to what our plans are with the property. And like Jim said, our initial intention was to have everything stored inside. Looks like going forward in 2021, got a couple potential big projects that we're going to do. That's why we made the revisions in the site plan for some outside storage, so. Other than that, I think Jim covered it quite well.
Thank you, sir. Chair, if you'd like to go to the public. I'm okay, I'm seeing a nod, so I'll open it up to the public for comments. We don't have that many attendees in the audience tonight, but at the same process, we'll go for each of the public hearing. If you would like to comment on this public hearing, please raise your hand by using the Raise Hand button on your Zoom application. And we will acknowledge you and we would love to hear your comments. Again, since we are doing a public hearing, I'll just pause for a bit and give people the opportunity to do that. When you do want to speak, we ask that you state your name and address and keep your comments three minutes. And Chair, I'm not seeing anyone who wants to speak on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. With that, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Aquinto. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 No one opposed. We will go to the next case. I make a motion to open case. Open for public hearing case JPC 190011 Whitmore Lake Public Schools, 168 Jennings Road, Whitmore Lake, Michigan. Under provisions of Article 32 Amendments, Section 36-1002, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from SR2, Single Family Residential District to LC Local Commercial District. The parcel is approximately 35.15 acres and is located on the west side of Main Street, just northwest of Jennings Road. The parcel number is B 0206 400007 and is currently zoned SR2, Single Family Residential District. With that, I'll turn it to Mr. Lippens for support. Oh, I'm sorry. You have support? I thought we already had support. We did by Mr. Aquinto. So that, I was just stating the case. We voted to open it. Mr. Lippens, I'll let you take it and go to the applicant and yourself for a short summary and then to the public.
Thank you, Chair. I see Superintendent Tom DeKaiser is in the audience, so I will promote Tom to panelist so that he can speak as well while I introduce the case. The first case is for the 168 Jennings Road property. The second case on the agenda tonight is for 8845. Both are properties owned by the public schools. The issue that is being addressed by the public schools and the issue that initiated the rezoning was there is a billboard on the public school's property. Billboard is required by the state of Michigan to be in a commercial zone. So the purpose of the rezoning is to bring the billboard into compliance with state regulations. It's probably a simplification, but for the purposes of a meeting tonight, I think that accurately describes the situation. We, the public school district is proposing these as a conditional rezoning, which means that there are conditions that they have offered that will limit potential commercial impacts related to the rezonings. I'll go into that further when we talk about the cases. But we do have recommendations to support. And for the purpose of the public hearing, I think it's important to note that the public schools have offered conditions that limit the number of commercial uses that could be developed on this property. And I think the other side note, which Superintendent DeKaiser could state probably in more detail is that they're school properties. And that's, I think, the intended future use of the property. So I'll let Tom speak to introduce the public hearing. And we will, we'll be holding two of these, so. Tom, would you like?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, you did. Maybe I'll speak most to this first one and not as much to the second one because they're very similar, just maybe in scope of size of the property. But the JPC 190011 is commonly referred to as our Jennings Athletic Fields. These were our primary high school fields years ago, before we built a new high school. And now they pretty much serve as a community function for us. We don't use them for any high school events unless we have a problem with our current high school field, so. But we, we were made aware that the sign on this property was mistakenly put there without the proper zoning. The district would like to maintain current use of all its facilities as school properties and maintain the revenue that we generate. And in order to do that, we have to transfer this from single residential to a business zoning and it's recommended local commercial is the best one. So that's in a very brief nutshell what we're looking for. The conditions that we're after are just assurances to the township that we really don't want to do anything else other than run athletic events and host community athletic or outdoor events at this property and just maintain it as it currently is being used.
Thank you, Superintendent. Chair, would we like to open it up for comments at this time?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I do see one comment. Mr. Dignan would like to speak. Mr. Dignan, I will promote you to panelist so that you can, or I will allow you to speak so that you can address the commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lippens, and thank you, Mr. Roman and Planning Commissioners. I'm going to speak to you tonight as a resident of Northfield Township, as the past president of Whitmore Lake Board of Education. And just for a note, I am currently still on the Whitmore Lake Board of Education. And what I wanted to speak to is the impact of the revenue over the years. This billboard, the billboards that are on our two, the two properties of the schools go back to 2007 when an agreement was reached prior to the act that currently makes them quote unquote "not compliant." They, since that time, they've provided over $600,000 worth of funding for student programs within the district. That's a profound amount of revenue for the school district. And it's critical to everything we do here in Whitmore Lake. I want to speak to you real quickly in regards to any concern you might have about use. Even during the most dire of times, 10 years ago, well, eight, nine years ago, when the school district was going through hard, difficult financial times, discussion of these properties came up and it was unanimous among the board that in perpetuity, this property represents a substantial impact to its historic place in the community with those that are alumni and have went here, as well as a huge desire on the part of the community to keep this property in its current type of use in perpetuity. With that being said, we did at that time also make some infrastructure improvements, added playgrounds, things of that sense. And most recently, you may know that the Board of Education brought before the voters a recreation millage which was approved. And down the road, will add to future improvements to that property. You know, that property is, I think, foundational to connecting our community and the recreational needs that present themselves in our future. And, you know, keeping these billboards is important to us. You know, there's a long political fight that took place that ended up with that act passing and requiring this to be commercial. And I know that we have fought very hard to do everything we can to help provide an exceptional education to our kids in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dignan. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak to these cases? Chair, I have not seen any other hands go up.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion and we close the public hearing for this case.
I support that.
Supported by Mr. Aquinto. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And we will go to case HC. Similar case, although it's listed separately on the agenda, so we do have to do it separately. And I'd like to ask the applicant before I make motion to open the case. I believe I was informed that there's an improper parcel ID number on this one.
Yes, Mr. Roman.
Thank you. And I believe, I just want to clarify with you, the last digits will be 006. That's the correction.
That is correct. There are two properties or two addresses at this site. The primary one is 8845, the secondary one is 8877. And I did mistakenly categorize it on the application as 8845. But the original contract, where the sign is located, is 8877 006. You're correct.
Okay, very good. And so I'll make, I'll make that a point in my motion and so that it's for the record that it's corrected. Thank you, Mr. DeKaiser. So I make motion to open the case JPC 190010 Whitmore Lake Public Schools, 8877 Main Street, Whitmore Lake. Under the provisions of Article 32 Amendments, Section 36-1002, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from SR1, Single Family Residential District to LC Local Commercial District. The parcel is approximately 1.54 acres and is located on Main Street, just south of Jennings Road. The parcel number is B-02-08-250-006 and currently zoned SR1, Single Family Residential District. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Zarzaki. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Again, Mr. Lippens, we'll go to you and I'm sure it'll be reflective of the same discussion we had on case B, but nonetheless, we'll do it again.
Yes, sir. And I think we could go straight to public comment. The issue that we discussed for the other case is really the same, same issue. We're looking at a conditional rezoning on this property as well. The public school has offered conditions to limit the commercial uses, but it will bring our recommendation to support a conditional rezoning on this site will bring the site into conformity with the state requirements. I do not see any hands up. I did see a question come in via Q and A from someone named Zoom user. So Zoom user, if you would like to ask your question during the public hearing, you could raise your hand. We would request your name and address. Thank you. I do see Zoom user has raised their hand. So Zoom user, I'm going to allow you to speak. And you should, I'm going to unmute you. And you should be able to speak now.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can. If you could please state your name and address and then you could ask your questions to the commission and they could choose to respond or we could answer your cases also when we review the case later.
Okay, this is Stephen Thomas. My address is 8945 Main Street. I'm just curious, does this affect, does this change rezoning affect property taxes or future permits? Or I don't know what this affects and I'd like to know.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, sir. If that summarized your comments, the Planning Commission may choose to address them at the end of the public hearing. All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and mute you again. Chair, I'm not seeing anyone else with their hand raised at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. If you could go ahead and perhaps touch upon Mr. Stephen Thomas's question.
Sure. Yeah, so the question is whether or not the rezoning of one of the school properties would affect the surrounding properties, property taxes or future permits. I would say that the rezoning of the property as it's proposed now is really intended to allow the existing conditions to remain and to bring a non-conformity that was created by the state into compliance with our local code. You know, with respect to any property taxes or future permits for surrounding property, it's my opinion that this rezoning would not impact or affect in any way negatively those surrounding properties based on not only the the uses proposed, but also the conditions that the public schools offered are intended to mitigate any unforeseen commercial uses being developed on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Would Mr. DeKaiser wish to add anything to this, to this public hearing?
Mr. Roman, I would just add that it's very important to continue revenue sources for the district. The stronger the schools are in this community, the more value property becomes. And that's, I think, relative to all homeowners, so that's my only added comment.
Thank you, Mr. DeKaiser. With that, I'd like to close public hearing. Is there support?
Support.
Support. Supported by Mr. Aquinto. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Continue on, we will go to reports of committees. Board of Trustees report, Ms. Chick.
The board met in person October 13th. The board approved the wastewater treatment plant construction administration services proposal submitted to Northfield Township by Tetra Tech in the amount of 223,000 for construction of the wastewater treatment plant equalization basin. The board also approved awarding the bid for construction to Reliance Building Company of Novi in the amount of 3,126,000 with a contingency of 6% for unseen conditions. The board also approved authorizing the issuance of 2020 capital improvement bonds, limited tax general obligation bonds not to exceed 3,865,000 to finance the cost of the basin. The cost of the bonds will be awarded to the bidder who's bid produced the lowest true interest cost. And of course, all contracts are subject to review of the attorney. That's it. And other business, normal township business was conducted.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. ZBA report, Mr. Kuznow.
ZBA just met this past Monday, the 19th, regarding one of the petitioners tonight, the Etara Firma site. It was approved for conditional use on the use of gravel, gravel parking area instead, in lieu of asphalt.
Thank you, Ms. Kuznow. I don't believe there'll be a staff report. Ms. Bird is not present this week. Planning Consultant, report, Mr. Lippens.
Yeah, tonight, I actually would like to take the opportunity to introduce my colleague Julie Connechy to Planning Commission. Very excited to have her as part of our Northfield team moving forward. But one of the big things we'd like to share with Planning Commission is that as part of my promotion to Vice President, I've also moved to Kalamazoo and I will be maintaining my role with Northfield Township as your community manager. But Julie is going to step in as your project manager, which means she's going to take over regular support of Planning Commission and also management of site plan, conditional use, rezoning and those types of day-to-day operations. I think Julie is, she's definitely able to speak for herself, but she's a great planner and I'm really excited for her opportunity to work with everyone. So Julie, would you like to say a few words, introduce yourself to the Planning Commission?
Sure, thanks, Paul. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to meet you, even if it is virtually. As Paul said, I'll be transitioning into a really active role with you all in Northfield Township. I'm a principal planner with McKenna. I have been with the firm since January. I'm a Michigan native, but previously I was working in the Philadelphia area, up and down the East Coast for about the last four years. So I'm happy to be home and home for me is just down the road in Ann Arbor. So I'm really close, I know the area and I'm really excited to get started with you. My, my experience as a planner is really rooted in my background in architecture. I hold degrees in architecture and urban planning from the University of Michigan. And I bring that to a variety of projects. So zoning ordinance updates, corridor improvement plans, master planning, kind of big picture stuff, as well as this, the more day-to-day work, working with the Planning Commission, site plan reviews, conditional uses and that type of thing. My clients currently range from very urban to very rural, so I've got a good kind of cross-section of experience already now that I'm back in Michigan and working. So I'm excited to see more of you all and jump right in. Paul and I are going to continue working out this transition. You know, there are a couple of cases that Paul started that are still active, that we're still working to that final approval and will be phasing me in more and more over time as we get new cases. So that said, Paul is not going away. He will always be here as a resource for me. So anything that I don't have the backstory on, Paul can help and make anything that I don't have the backstory on, Paul can help and make sure that I'm, I'm up to speed and can hit the ground running.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Conochie, on behalf of the planning commission. I'm sure everyone, I welcome you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Parks and Recs report, Mr. Iquinto.
Thank you. The Parks and Rec, the community garden is wrapping up. We, for this year, we did complete and build the shed on site, so that it'll help get us organized and cleaned up and be very presentable for folks there. Other than that, things are well for the Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown Planning Group report, Ms. Infante.
The Downtown Planning Group met on the twenty-third of September, and two primary issues came out of it. One is that they are looking at a marketing plan for the township, and they are developing sort of a concise promo piece to go with it. The other item of real concern to the PC would be that they are concerned about the stagnation of the project or process of streamlining, streamlining new business applications. And they're wondering where that is, where is it going, who is in charge? And the, the general consensus is that we may be losing potential businesses because that has not been completed. So that was basically the balance of the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Infante. Perhaps Mr. Lippens can make a comment regarding the question posed? While we have him here?
Yeah, well, I, I would say it probably would be a good idea to schedule a McKenna planner to come to an upcoming DDA meeting and talk to the DDA about their, their goals. I, I have not attended a DDA meeting in some time. But I agree that business attraction and new business welcoming packages is important. The one thing that I would say initiative that planning commission has started and the board has offered support for is working on the development packet in our development procedures. So that's actually a project that Julie is going to be working on, and we, Julie, myself, and Mary met recently to go through the development packet and to talk through the, the improvements and modifications that we want to make to make that process clearer and more easy for people who do want to come and open businesses in the township. We did prepare a packet item for planning commission, but our last meeting was canceled. And since we have a fairly full agenda tonight, it was not placed on the agenda this week. But we do have a working session prepared for planning commission. I think we could plan to do that possibly at the next meeting and start to talk about development packet and the modifications that we want to make. So I think that is a similar similar topic to the one that Ms. Infante brought up, but probably not exactly what DDA wanted, so. We may need to, as I said, we may need to meet with DDA and get some more information about what specifically they'd like to address, because I'm sure we can work on it.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. We have no unfinished business tonight. New business, item eleven A is the case to recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Terraferma six-four-one-eight Whitmore Lake Road. That kind of seeking conditional use to operate landscape business with the parcel numbers B zero-two-two-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-three and four in our zone LI Limited Industrial District. With that, this will be the planning commission's discussion regarding this case, and I'd go to Mr. Lippens to give us his opinion, and we also have something from OHM, and I see Mr. McNamara in the house. I did.
Yes. With respect to the conditional use, we are in support of the conditional use application and recommend approval. We find that the application does meet the standards, and you know, this is consistent with how, you know, this use, you know, outdoor storage of mulch, river rock, these types of things. It's, it's a part of landscaping business, right? And the advantage to the rezoning of this site to industrial or limited industrial was that that zoning permits as a conditional use outdoor storage material. So I'm, I'm certainly supportive. You have a recommendation from from staff to, to recommend approval of this use to the board. And as Mr. Patterson stated, this is something that gets them ahead so that next year they won't have to come back for this if their business expands. So what we're doing is we're setting them up for success by approving this and for growth. So these are all, all good things. So yeah, I'm, I'm supportive. We find that the application meets the standards for approval for conditional use. And it's consistent with the master plan and zoning for the site.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Just to clarify, there are no conditions that you reported, and so I'm assuming there are, there are no other ones for this, just to verify for the record. No conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. Any of the commissioners like to address the conditional use? Questions, comments? It's regarding the outside storage, really? So if we have any questions, Mr. Dwyer?
It's almost impossible to operate a landscaping business without outside storage. And they do have them tucked behind the buildings, so they really are, you know, almost invisible from anywhere outside the site, in addition to the ten-foot screened fence. I think it'd be onerous to handcuff them and say they can't do this. And it makes complete sense to allow them this conditional use.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Anyone else? Seeing that, for myself, I am glad to see the applicant continue on with the conditional use. It's probably very important for his business and to wrap it all in one package tonight, so. Seeing no other comments or questions, I make a motion to recommend to approve the conditional use request by the applicant and recommend that to the Board of Trustees.
I support.
Go ahead.
I support that recommendation.
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, we have to do a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer? I believe he's there.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Yes.
And Zarzaki, yes, so it passes by seven, nothing.
Thank you. With that, we will go to the next case, which was the JPC two-zero-zero-zero-one-eight. It's to recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Terraferma six-four-one-zero Whitmore Lake Road. That kind of seeking site plan approval to operate this same business, landscaping business, parcel numbers zero-two-two-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-three and four zone LI Limited Industrial District. Mr. Lippens?
Thank you, Chair. We have returned from the table the site plan for the Terraferma site. We do have a recommendation to approve the site plan this evening, noting as Commissioner Kusino shared with planning commission, the ZBA did hear this case on Monday, and there was a unanimous approval of a variance for the portion of the site that the applicant was requesting remain gravel. And additionally, the only other change that's happened since the last time planning commission has heard this case was the outdoor storage, which we just discussed. So, you know, and I would just say, given that extra month of time that we had since planning commission in conversation with the applicant, the architect, we determined that there would be time for them to get the conditional use at this time. So we were able to include that as part of this approval process, and as planning commission agrees by your last vote, I think that is, is very good for the future development of this site. So at this time, we are recommending planning commission approve the site plan. And would go to Marcus for his report if the chair agrees.
Yes, Mr. McNamara?
Good evening. Quickly, I know we've seen this plan before. Really, the only item that we had that was outstanding, other than resolution of the gravel surface was the overflow drainage outlet. The previous plan was proposing to have the overflow pipe stop short of clearing the improved portion of the site, so we made a recommendation to extend that east to get past the improved area, the, the, the storage barn and the circulation and parking area. And they've been able to do that. That's, that's on the plan that you have for you tonight. And we do have correspondence from MDOT approving the outlet as they are proposing it. So from an engineering standpoint, we did not have any conditions for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. And for the record, there's an approval in the packet from the Northfield Township Fire Department with no identified issues. So with that, we can go to discussion from the commissioners. Anyone have questions, comments on the site plan? Ms. Chick?
I also see that the driveway got, they got approvals from the neighbor there, the, about the driveway, so that was also helpful. I do have a, a comment, maybe it might behoove the planning commissioners, in case we run into similar circumstances where there are underground utilities and it interferes with whatever ordinance requires a surface, that we either do an amendment or in addition to the ordinance that allows for some kind of special, under special circumstances for it to be changed.
Anyone else? Seeing none. I'll make them, and just to clarify, Mr. Lippens, you do have a condition on your report that we will include. Am I correct?
Correct, yes. Just that other agency approvals as required are, are provided and addressed.
Right, which is normal. So I'm, I'm going to make the motion to approve with conditions, the request of Terraferma sixty-four-ten on their site plan. That's it. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquinto, I believe. Any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Thank you, Ms. Chick.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Passes seven, zero.
Thank you. Next item of business is the case JPC one-nine-zero-zero-zero-one, again, one-sixty-eight Jennings Road. Advocate seeking to rezon the property from SR two to LC. And the specified parcel number is B zero-two-zero-six-four-zero-zero-zero-seven. With that, we'll go to an update or a report from Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair. The township and the state of Michigan have rules in place to allow for the conditional rezoning of property. And we feel in this case that the conditions offered by the applicant have substantively met the requirements to allow for the rezoning of this property in a way that is consistent with the master plan and maintain the existing uses on the site, as was mentioned by the superintendent. There's a, a, a fair amount of economic benefit to the school system for maintaining the, the billboards on the site. So we found that the standards are met and are recommending approval of the rezoning application. I would like to, just for the record, mention the conditions that have been offered by the public school. As part of the rezoning, they have noted that several permitted uses in in the local commercial district would be removed from their rezoning. And those permitted uses include clothing and apparel services, food and grocery markets, personal services like barber shops and salons, professional services like attorneys, real estate agents, and then retail services like drugstores, hardware, gift shops. So there will be no permitted commercial uses of those types as part of the rezoning. Additionally, they voluntarily removed as part of the conditions they have proposed uses that are conditionally supported in the local commercial district, including animal hospitals or vets, restaurants serving alcohol, residential dwelling units as principal structure, outdoor seating when associated with restaurants, mini housing, mini warehousing or, or storage facilities, churches, synagogues, mosques, temples, and cemeteries. All of those uses are conditionally permitted in the LC district, but will not be permitted as part of this conditional rezoning. The one thing I would like to note for the benefit of planning commission is that based on the state law, we are not, or the township is not permitted to make any modifications to these commission, conditions. So these conditions are voluntary, voluntarily provided by the applicant to support the rezoning, and we can accept them as part of a motion to rezone, or we can deny the motion to rezone. But we can't request other conditions as part of this rezoning. And I'm happy to address any questions like that if, on that issue, if planning commissioners do have questions about it. So we are recommending support of the conditional rezoning on this case.
Thank you, Ms. Lippens. Any commissioners have comments, questions? Mr. Iquinto?
So why are all of these stipulations being placed on this rezoning?
They volunteered it.
Mr. Lippens?
They are being placed because the, the master plan for this site is not a master plan for commercial uses. So in order to make the rezoning consistent with the master plan, the applicant has offered these conditions, which do make the effect of this rezoning condition with the master plan. which do make the effect of this rezoning condition with the master plan. And making sure that an application to rezone is conforming with the township's land use policy is one of the primary tests that we put in place when evaluating a rezoning application. But based on the conditions that are offered, we're able to make a recommendation that the rezoning will be consistent with the township master plan.
Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
No, this is the first time we've seen anything like this. I don't think there's any other zoning in the township that has this kind of conditions placed on it. So that makes me a little uncomfortable about it. So, and I'm wondering if you could define for us exactly what spot zoning is, because it kind of sounds like that. And I want to make sure, as trustee, we're protecting the township.
That is a good question, trustee Chick. This, this being, what is being proposed here is a conditional rezoning, which is an authorized form of rezoning by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. It is, it's not too common. It's not too common. And it is something that I, I think, my opinion is it's been, it's been supported and included in our state legislature to address situations that are really exactly like this, where you can, with certain conditions that are offered by an applicant, rezon a site and address an issue where your plan can be in conformance with zoning that's requested. And I guess to more specifically address your question, I would say because this is a conditional rezoning and we're following state rules on this, the term spot zoning, which I don't really like that term, does not apply in this instance.
Okay, so this is a tool that other people could use. If they rezone their property, as long as they put additional conditions on it, it would be considered legal with the state.
Correct, yes.
I'm very sympathetic to the issue with the school. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I would say that's one of the reasons why I was trying, tried to be careful to explain to Planning Commission that the conditions that are offered are offered by the applicant and we can't place additional conditions on it or modify those conditions is to stay in compliance with the state act, which created this as an option for rezoning.
Mr. Iquinto?
I just wanted to clarify that I am very supportive of this rezoning for the school district because, again, those billboards do bring in and cover at minimum a teacher's salary per year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
May I just pipe in quickly? I really support Commissioner Chick's concern about basically precedents. And I also agree with Mr. Iquinto that it's really important for the income of the area. But I think it's very important, what you just clarified, Mr. Lippens, about how this does conform with prior practice, even if it is quite rare. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For myself, Mr. Lippens, I see on page three of the report, the permitted uses, there's permitted uses and conditional uses that will remain. I'd like to just clarify that. Appears under permitted uses, accessory use, building or structure will remain an option. And the conditional use as temporary outdoor sales, subject to requirements of section 36-734 and commercial communications apparatuses would be also a possibility. Is that correct? Mr. Lippens?
Yes, it sounds accurate, Chair. But I, you know, I'm not reading exactly what you're reading, so it's hard for me to verbally verify that.
Okay, it's on, it's on the bottom of page three, the last section of your review.
Requested permitted uses.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, sir. Yes, that, so that is correct, as stated in our, in our review letter.
Okay, so is that, those are, those are cases, or those are uses that did you have a discussion about those, or that was, that was proposed by the applicant? How did it come about?
So I would say, in keeping with my earlier comment about how we're not permitted to request any modifications to the conditions offered by the applicant. They, you know, we have to evaluate the conditions as offered. But those uses that were not limited are, I think, consistent with the master plan as we've, as we've done, described in our analysis. So you know, again, this is a rezoning. So I mean, part of the intent of the rezoning is to permit the signage on the site, which is not permitted in the underlying district, will be permitted in this district.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify. I just want to make sure everyone understands that they will still have the capability of an accessory use, the building or structure. They have temporary outdoor sales, and I'm not exact, I didn't look up that particular section, but obviously temporary outdoor sales and then a commercial communication apparatus, which it could be, you know, another communication tower or something in addition to the billboard that's existing there. I don't know. But I just wanted to clarify that. And perhaps you can clarify the temporary outdoor sales of section 36734. I'm not, I'm not exactly, is it exactly sure what that one is?
Well, temporary outdoor sales could be well, you know, it could be a holiday sale or that type of a thing. I could pull up that ordinance section if you want the details on what the standards of requirements are.
I'm just asking, did somebody look up the requirements of that, or the standards of that?
Well, yeah, I'm sure we reviewed it, but I think as the in a rezoning, you evaluate all the uses in the district, right? So we looked at the character of all the uses in the district and the uses that were offered to be removed. So yes, I mean, but if specifically you want to talk about that use, we can talk about it more. I mean, I can pull up, I can pull up the standards.
That's not necessary. Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Mr. Iquinto?
I was just going to share that could be something like fundraisers that the school has periodically, couldn't it be?
Or fairs.
Like craft fairs or bake sales or anything, cookie sales, yes.
Anything to help raise funds for the district.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to make a clarification as to what they can still perhaps do with, with their ability to do this. So the other question, I'll just move on. Mr. Lippens, in the packet, there's, there's, for each of this addresses, there's a document zoning request, there's the 168 Jennings, and then the Main Street address. Who, whose document is this? Is this yours or the zoning administrator's document? It's an unsigned thing. It wasn't part of your packet as far as your report or review. I'm just wondering where this came from. It says, talks about supplemental questions. Was that produced by yourself or where did it come from?
I believe that it's a part of the application that was submitted by the applicant. So you have in your file the materials that were submitted by the applicant with the application. And then you have our review of that application.
Okay, I'm not seeing that, but that's fine. In it, it lists the adjacent existing land uses, the future land use, and to each direction, north, north, south, east, west. And so that, so that was part of the applicant's information?
I believe so, yes. Yes, these are the applicant's responses to the questions that are on the township's rezoning application.
Okay, thank you. And then my last, just a minute, Mr. Dwyer, I got one last question. I'll get to you next. Mr. Lippens, can you give us a timeframe? Like, when did these, right, these regulations from the state become effective? And when are they going to be effective in the future as far as this case is concerned?
Well, I know we were looking to get or the public school district was looking to get these applications approved by October 1st of this year. And we've done our best to meet that timeline. So I think we're as close to that, that timeline as we, as we could have achieved.
So in other words, through, through this process, when did, when did these regulations become law or binding from the state? That's, that's my question.
Yeah, I would have to ask the superintendent for more information on that.
Okay, Mr. Lippens, I don't know if Mr. DeKaiser is available or not to answer. I would, I would be willing to, if he, if he's able to answer the question.
He's here. Tom, do you have more information for the Chair on the process the school district went through in determining that you needed to rezon the property?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can go all the way back, I think, to 1970 for the Highway Advertising Act, which states that it has to be in a commercial zone. But it was brought to our attention that the signs weren't put in the commercial zone in 2013 under a previous superintendent. So there's multiple ways I can answer the question, Mr. Roman. I discovered it by about 2000, late 2018, that this should have been done. And then we began the process immediately.
Very good. Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Dwyer, I believe, had some questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. DeKaiser.
Yeah, I just want to touch on the point that Chairman Roman made about the supplemental questions. And it's not clear the source of that document. And especially as it's written in the style of McKenna, and the table in section three comparing existing, future, land use, and existing zoning is almost identical to the McKenna same table. And I think it's vital that in future, we know exactly the source of that document. Because I've read it as a McKenna document, and it clearly wasn't, is what I'm hearing. So that's, we've got to make sure that we understand, if this is from the applicant, that, you know, what he's saying is not really coming from Mr. Lippens. And that's truly, that's how I read it.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. I thought the same as you. I thought it may have been the zoning administrators portion, but well put. And either way, Mr. Lippens?
Yeah, I would just say it's, it's certainly possible that communication that we had with the school district at some point was put into their application. So it's, it's definitely possible. It could be part of the original zoning compliance letter. But these questions are part of the rezoning application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I can make a motion, Mr. Roman, if you're ready.
I was working on one, but go ahead.
Regarding case number JPC 190011, Whitmore Lake Public Schools, 168 Jennings Road, Whitmore Lake, I would like to recommend to the Board of Trustees approval of rezoning of this site from SR1 to LC with the conditions as proposed by the applicant in the packet presented today.
I'll support that. Any further questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
All right, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Afonte?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. We'll move to the next case, which is 11D JPC 190010, Whitmore Lake Public Schools, address of 8877 Main Street, different from what is on the agenda. For the same request to rezonate property from SR1, single-family residential to LC Local Commercial District for that address, and the parcel number is B 0208 250006. Again, a change from what was printed. So with that, we'll go to Mr. Lippens.
Thank you, Chair. Yep, thank you. I spent a good amount of time at the, on the last case describing the conditional use process. The applicant has offered conditions for this rezoning as well. And they are the same, I believe, but I'll go through and cover them. Permitted uses that would be removed from the application, clothing and apparel, food, grocery, and similar, personal services, offices, and retail. Conditional uses voluntarily removed from the application, hospitals, animal hospitals, restaurants serving alcohol, single-family dwelling, outdoor seating for restaurants, mini warehousing, churches, synagogues, cathedrals, and cemeteries. So we are recommending also approval of this with the conditions that are offered by the applicant. And would happily have discussion or answer questions specific to this site as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Any questions, comments from the commission? Mr. Kuzno?
Is, is there a billboard on this property as well?
Yes.
And so this is the exact same situation as the other one? Is this the one that has the electronic billboard or the other one?
The other one is the electronic billboard, sure.
Okay. That's all I had. I just wasn't sure.
The difference being between the two is the mixed use, future land use. Am I correct, Mr. Lippens?
Between the uses offered?
No, be, between the previous case and this case, the difference is the future land used, nation of mixed use. That's the, that's the difference. But, but other, other than that, it's very, it's almost identical with the same permitted uses that I questioned. The accessory use, the temporary outdoor sales as conditioned, conditional use and then requirements of that ordinance regarding the sales and then the communication apparatus. Am I correct?
Correct. Uh, the future land use for this parcel is mixed, the mixed use district as opposed to the SR two district.
So I was just trying to clarify that or help Mr. Kuzno's question.
I, I appreciate it. I understand. Thank you.
Questions, comments regarding that? This case? Seeing none, Mr. Iaquinto, would you like to make the motion again?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Regarding case number JPC one nine zero zero one zero, Whitmore Lake Public Schools, address eight eight seven seven Main Street, parcel number B zero two, zero eight, two five, zero, 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 six. I recommend from the Planning Commission to the Board of Trustees a rezoning from SR one to LC with the conditions as proposed by the applicant in the packet presented today.
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki?
All right, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Mr. Aquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Again, seven, zero. Pass.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. Moving on, we'll go to the minutes. I'd like to make the motion, we approve the minutes from September sixteenth meeting and dispense with the reading.
Moved.
Uh, supported by Mr. Iaquinto. Any questions, comments, corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None. We'll go to final call to the public. Mr. Lippens, I'll let you take that.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we will open it up for comments from the public. We would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address. I do see that, uh, Mr. Dignan has his hand raised. Uh, Mr. Dignan, we'd like to acknowledge you to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. I appreciate that. This is Ken Dignan, nine two one zero Hillcrest. Uh, I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for consideration for the school district's rezoning request. Uh, and also I wanted to wish Mr. Lippens well as he moves as transitioning into his new role and welcome. Julie, Julie, correct? How does she say her last name? You have that?
Conneke.
Conneke. Okay, Julie, welcome aboard and look forward to working with you in the future. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dignan. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Uh, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on, on your Zoom application to raise your hand. I'm not seeing any members of the attendees raising their hands now, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. With that, we'll go to comments from commissioners. Ms. Chick?
Uh, yep, I, I wanted to also welcome Julie Conneke to the team and look forward to working with you going forward. We've got some projects on the plate here and we'll hear from you and, Mr. Lippens, always wish you well. Thank you so much for everything you've done so far. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Infante.
Oh, good luck and thank you for all your work. Although before you leave, definitely meet with the DDA if you can, please. Thank you. And Julie, really looking forward to working with you. That's all I have too.
Can I make one more comment really quick?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lippens and actually Cecilia. I think what the board is speaking to Cecilia's issue about what the streamlining process that the DDA is looking for, that is exactly what the board is looking for from the Planning Commission as well. They're looking to streamline in the building department, step-by-step checklist, all that. So that it just goes really, really smoothly when an applicant comes in. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's a good clarification because that's the process we have started. So yeah, we are, we are working on it and we'll be presenting at an upcoming Planning Commission.
Which is great because that's what the DDA needs to hear and everybody needs to know.
Awesome.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Iaquinto?
No comments, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, no comments. Just get out and vote this November third, please.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, nothing tonight. So thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki?
Just Paul enjoy Kalamazoo and we look forward to working with Julie. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, same, Mr. Lippens. Thanks for your service and Ms. Conneke, I, I probably mispronounced your name last time around, so I'm, I'm going to work on it. I apologize for that. Uh, but yeah, welcome and looking forward to, uh, future meetings with you. So with that, I will announce next regular meeting November fourth, twenty twenty and make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Supported by too many. Opposed? I say it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye.